Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the work session. Today is September 20th, 2021. We're gonna start with a small update, two very small issues from Ms. Solano.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, City Council, and Mayor Gradisar. I have two very short updates before I turn it over with for an ARPA presentation. The first update is from Tara Marshall, the Department of Local Affairs, the Southeast Regional Director. She has been in communication with the mayor's office this afternoon. Just to let you all know, you should be expecting a invitation from the governor's office regarding his visit to Pueblo on Friday afternoon. He'll be visiting two local businesses with the mayor and any of you and county commissioners, as well as a quick visit through the Chilerihola Festival. And the second, very short update, is an ARPA update and yielding the rest of the city updates time to Kim Bowman, the Executive Director of the Posada, as there is an emergency ordinance on next Monday evening's agenda for a request for ARPA funding with which the mayor is recommending and supporting. And you haven't had an opportunity to hear from Executive Director Bowman, so she's joining us this evening. And I can turn it, that's all of the updates unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you. So we'll go to number one on the agenda, which is the ARPA presentation, Posada Property Purchase. Ms. Bowman, it's great to see you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Council, for your time this evening. And I want to speak to you about a project that Posada is working on, and that is the acquisition of two fourplexes located at 65 through 71 and 73 through 79 Castle Royal. They're both, each independent unit is a fourplex, and we are looking forward to providing affordable housing on a permanent basis to Pueblo's low-income and homeless individuals. Temporarily, we would like to utilize a portion of the property for the purpose of providing congregate shelter to COVID-positive, single homeless individuals in the community. And that's something that we were very pleased to provide for the city and county during the last year and the early part of this year at the Sunset Motel. That particular property is undergoing rehabilitation right now, and we look forward to providing single-room occupancy housing on a permanent basis to Pueblo's low-income and homeless senior citizens. This particular development is really important, and I think it's really important that we address this in a timely manner because the COVID numbers are, the positive numbers are going up. You know, we are right now sheltering COVID-positive individuals at motel rooms that were contracted here in the city. The particular development that the city would look for, I'm asking the city support on, would be one of the units, which would be a fourplex, and the contracted price is $405,000. We conducted a market study, or we had a market study completed, and the market study identified a market price of $385,000. So we have a $20,000 difference. And I'm asking Council for their consideration and enabling us to purchase this, given the fact that there's a 2% vacancy rate in affordable housing here in our community. In addition, there are five confirmed over-contracted-price offers that are on the table right now. And Denver Realtors are just waiting to step in here and purchase those. So I'm really hopeful that I'll have your support. I'm working with Katie Davis and to secure an emergency ordinance to enable expanded residency because zoning caps us at three unrelated individuals in a single-family residence. And the Health Department has the ability to issue an emergency ordinance to enable expanded occupancy there on a temporary basis. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Any questions, comments? Counsel Brown?
I just want to thank you for what you're doing. This is tough times, and so I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you. We've got a great amount of support from the community. The Health Department's been really terrific. And, you know, we've contracted catered meals to provide to quarantine individuals through the Wayside Mission. And so we've, you know, really done a good job, I think, in trying to quarantine folks and keep them sheltered.
Counsel Atencio?
You're asking for the ARPA money to purchase this property?
Yes, yes, sir, yes.
And you're going to use it for COVID-positive?
Temporarily, we're gonna use it for COVID-positive, unsheltered individuals in the community.
And that's a fourplex?
Correct. And then long-term will be affordable housing for low-income.
Are these individuals or families, or because I imagine a fourplex is at least two-bedroom each unit?
They are. They are two-bedroom, and these will be single individuals.
So you're gonna provide a two-bedroom apartment for a single individual?
Well, we are going to, we're working with the Health Department to secure an emergency ordinance to enable expanded occupancy. So we are hopeful that we're going to have possibly as many as five individuals in one apartment.
All COVID-positive?
And so because they are all COVID-positive, we can provide a congregate shelter.
Are you going to offer healthcare of any kind, a person on-site to monitor?
We didn't in the last model that we provided. We did not.
And then what are you gonna do with it after, after, let's say, COVID?
We'll use it for permitted housing, permanent affordable housing.
And that'll be rental properties?
Correct.
You'll rent them out to people?
Correct. And we'll serve a population of 50% of the area median income and below.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, when?
So I just wanted to point out one thing to everyone, that if someone has symptoms where they're able to stay at home, it's generally just a bad cold, so they don't really need somebody to be monitoring them. They just need to be away from the rest of the public.
Also, I had a question as far as, and you've probably been doing this, but vaccinating the homeless. Have you been involved in any of that? And do you know how many homeless people have been vaccinated?
I couldn't give you a precise number, I'm sorry, but I can tell you that we have been very instrumental in providing vaccinations. We hosted a vaccination clinic at our homeless memorial last month. So there are several clinics that are available for the homeless, and I know the Wayside Mission provides, you know, several vaccination clinics as well. Yeah. You're welcome.
Counsel Schilling? Thank you for being here. Zalanga and I are not gonna be able to vote on this, so it's gonna be up to the five of you. But to me, this is exactly what this ARPA money is for, and I hope that you all will support it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Counsel Flores? I had a question. Will there be a revolving, kind of in and out of these people that are positive? So it's really not permanent housing for these people, but it's really a kind of a temporary revolving shelter.
And actually, we are only inheriting with the purchase of the property two vacant units, and through attrition, we'll make more available. And that is just, you know, a temporary situation. We're very hopeful that, you know, like the last bout that we encountered with the, you know, high numbers of COVID-positive individuals in the community, that again, we'll be able to, you know, close the shelter portion of that down and move forward with our plans for permanent housing. So the property will be utilized on a permanent basis for permanent affordable housing for low-income individuals.
And this also includes young people. You know, I've had several calls about what we're doing about young homeless teens specifically, and...
Unfortunately, we're not able to shelter minors.
Okay. And how do you define a minor?
Under the age of 18.
Okay.
So Posada's youth shelter, we shelter 18- to 24-year-olds.
And where is that at?
2104 Norman Lane.
Okay.
It's a seven-bedroom, five-bath development.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Kim, thank you. Yes, this is, you know, anytime that we can get housing units for whatever they're gonna be used for, as long as it's affordable and we can move forward that, we need them desperately. So I think that this is definitely something that the ARPA money is to be used for, and obviously, it is such a tremendous need in the community, as you know.
I do.
I'm preaching to the choir here, but...
Thank you. Thanks. I'll just take a minute to tell you about some of the other developments that we're working on. We actually have five developments that are in process right now. So the two rehabilitation projects, one is at the Sunset Motel, and that's for the provision of senior housing. Our family shelter at 1207 Elko is undergoing a major renovation, and we'll look forward to having a community open house and welcome you all there to see all the incredible improvements. We are negotiating on two additional new construction, or one new construction. It's 11 acres. That's just west of Our Lady of the Meadows, and that was part of the Roger Dorsey Community Fund. And so we are very hopeful that we'll be able to annex that into city limits and move forward with the low-income housing tax credit application for consideration in February next year. And that'll be close to 100 units of multifamily housing. And the last is the Bramble Tree. We're hoping to access DOLAS Operation Turnkey funding that's just been announced for acquisition of motels and rehabilitation. There are 63 units at the Bramble Tree, and 50 of those are occupied by long-term renters. And so we'll have 13 units that we'll inherit with hopes with a positive funding announcement award for us. And we'll have 13 units that we'll be able to use for emergency shelter overflow for our families, as well as, you know, in the event that next year we're dealing with COVID again, where we would be able to make those units available to COVID-positive individuals.
Mr. Kugosik, you had something?
Yes. The, I think Council should be aware, the seller of both units is the estate of Ray Aguilera. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're really hopeful to carry on Ray's legacy in providing and caring for low-income individuals in our community.
And the market analysis is $385 for each, but the contract is $410. Is, have you talked to the representative of Ray's estate to see if they would accept the market price?
I have, but given the fact that they have five backup offers that are in excess of $410,000, she's not very inclined to drop the price at that level.
So, hey, okay. Have you had access to those offers?
I have not.
So in terms of ARPA regulations, how are we gonna justify spending $25,000 more than the market analysis?
I believe they're under contract for $405,000 apiece.
No, I just had...
Did you pull it up? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I asked to see the contracts, and they're $410.
Okay, okay. My mistake.
So I'm trying to find a way to exceed market value.
I think that Mr. Schilling can probably speak best to the volatile housing market that we're all encountering right now, and...
Well, yeah, but Mr. Kugosik's bringing up the bottom line. There's $25,000 difference, and you guys need, my question's gonna be, do you have $25,000 bucks? Because with that, you're not gonna get them out. I'm all for it. You gotta know that. But we're not gonna do anything stupid and in some way jeopardize all our ARPA money. So what I'm hearing is you need to come up with 25 grand. Then the second question is, how long are they giving you to wait to give them a final answer?
We've extended the contract once, and I can explore...
Okay, so you have an accepted contract, and it's been extended till when?
Until the end of, or actually till mid-October.
Okay. So in this case, you may need to really scramble, I think, is what I'm hearing. Am I correct?
You know, we do have general funds that we can, we can apply to complete the purchase.
So does this qualify for $385,000 then, if that's the price?
It does.
Okay.
$385.
So we gotta grab 25 grand somewhere. And I think you already know that, right?
I was hoping not to. I had my back pocket pretty sewn up, but yes.
Well, you need to kind of find a drop in the bucket somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, as long as we're all square on that.
This is on for action for September the 27th, as I recall, an emergency ordinance under a resolution to approve the $385,000. This has been vetted up through the process, through the internal committee and through the internal leadership team, and this is obviously something that everybody wanted to do. But we said we can't spend more than, you know, the fair market value. So that's where $385 came from, so.
You got a job to do.
I do. I have to break into our bank account and...
You can get it done.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You can provide us with an appraisal for a higher amount. As city attorney, I don't approve any real estate contract without a certified appraisal. I understand that under federal regulations, that's not necessary, but there must be an independent market analysis, and that came in at $25,000 less.
Yeah. And I think in consideration of the current critical situation that we're in with the COVID numbers going up, that we'll opt to self-fund that deficit.
Counsel McCully-Bachicha?
Before we leave this conversation, I just wanted to be transparent with everyone. I'm not participating in this discussion nor voting because I serve on the Posada Board.
Do we know, did anybody else have anything?
Well, we need direction, I think, from Council.
Well, it's my assumption it's gonna be on the agenda the 27th, isn't it?
So you would like us to place it on at $385?
Any objection to that? No, we're good with that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
Thank you.
And thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
The pickleball courts, next on the agenda, Ms. Hunker. Is it Hunker or Husker? Hunker. It's great to see you again. Thanks for coming.
Good to see all of you. Thanks for inviting me, I can take this off, right? Thanks for inviting me back to talk a little bit more about pickleball. To be honest with you, when I came in, in August, to the public session, I thought I would just tell you why I was frustrated. You guys had talked about it with Parks and Rec, and that would be like moving forward. But when you asked me to come back tonight, I don't know if you could see that, like, my head popped off and started spinning, and I was like, now what do I do? But here I am. So I really am speaking mostly, again, from my opinion, but I think I do have the support of the pickleball players in Pueblo. And I think I laid the groundwork for you last time, pretty much of what the situation is. I'll answer any questions that you have, but if I can't answer them, we have our pickleball ambassadors, Quentin and Kate Tomato, with us, and they'll be able to answer any questions also. I'm gonna first start off with letting you know that when I presented a packet to you in August, I gave you a price figure of $65,000 to refurbish a tennis court to a pickleball court. But I since have learned that that was for a tile scenario tennis court, and it had a 16-years guarantee and a 20-year lifespan. And I didn't know that at the time. Let's see, PowerPoints. There we go. So the tiled surface is what's on the left, and what we really need is a post-tension concrete court, which I'm sure is quite a bit more expensive. So I want to apologize for giving you a wrong figure the first time around. Pickleball's played here every day. We have at least 200 active members, and that number grows each week. And some people are playing at Pueblo Tennis Center, known at the country as the Country Club, Reps Gym, the YMCA, and the two junior courts at City Park, and plus some old tennis courts at Pueblo Community College. The only play that's available to the general public is at City Park and Pueblo Community College, and those are really just old tennis courts at Pueblo Community College. We really can't provide a resource that is available to all the community members, whatever their age, social status, or economic status is. I spoke to a player the other night, and he said he thinks nothing of driving 50 miles to play pickleball. And I also communicated with a gym teacher in one of our elementary schools, and he said he introduced the sport to his classes, and the kids love it. He went on to say that his family enjoys playing, and they drive to Canyon City to play. So I think there are a lot of Pueblo players that go to Colorado Springs and Canyon City to play, and I think we'd be surprised at the number of people that do that. If our citizens are going to other towns, and we're not attracting people from other communities to play in Pueblo, we're kind of losing out twice. Health is one reason why we'd want to do it. It's good for weight management, great for cardio, increases mental health as well. As a community, we could provide an additional health and fitness option for our citizens if we had courts. Additionally, we would be contributing to a modern and positive image of Pueblo. If we had courts, we could draw visitors that would provide economic benefit to our businesses. Pickleball clubs host tournaments, and pickleball players love to play in them. Two weekends ago, Salida hosted a tournament. They had 165 registrants representing Colorado, Texas, New Mexico, Arizona, Utah, California, Nebraska, Michigan, Illinois, and Oklahoma. 60% of the registrants were from out-of-state. They probably spent three nights in the hotels, ate at least their evening meals in local restaurants, bought gas, and probably did shopping. We have soccer tournaments, baseball games, football games, and other sports that draw young people and their families. They are probably putting four to six people in a hotel room and eating at McDonald's. That's not a bad thing, but adults traveling to play pickleball are likely to be on less of a budget. They may have one or two people in a hotel room, want to eat at local restaurants, enjoy our local hotspots. Generally, they are at a different point in their lives, and they can afford to spend a little bit more. Currently, this is what our public option is. The picture on the left shows ghost lines. Those are very faint lines that actually line what a pickleball court should look like. The picture on the right is us lying out with tape the correct dimensions for a pickleball court. We lay that down when we show up, and we take it when we leave. Pickleball attracts, oh, this is what we're hoping for. Six to eight courts in one location. Pickleball attracts all ages. Right now, we have players that are 10 years old, all the way up to the mid-80s. It's expensive, inexpensive to get started in. You can start with a paddle and balls for $50 to $75. Schools are introducing it in their programs, and the YMCA is considering it. There's a, we're currently meeting as a group to discuss the formation of a nonprofit organization, form a governing board, and recruit some official ambassadors who would work to promote the sport in our community and our schools. There's a ton of hope and enthusiasm for where they hope you are going to take us. In my opinion, the GOCO grant request was our Plan A, but now we need a Plan B. So I'm gonna show you what the options appear to be, and I think the Parks and Rec Department has identified these locations. But before we start through that, I'll show you that this is the recommended court size, anywhere between 100 to 115 feet by 130 to 160 feet. The dimensions that you see in the next few slides are not 100% accurate. They've been stepped off by me and one other pickleball player, so you can take that into consideration. They're close, but not totally accurate. Also consider that the opinions about each of the courts are just that, they're my opinions. This is Lehigh Park. It's on the south side of town. It's much smaller than what we need unless we use the basketball court next to it. It has cracked asphalt, no lights, no restrooms, street parking. It has easy access from Pueblo Boulevard. It has a low crime rate, and it shouldn't interfere with the neighborhood. Fairmont Park is on the north side of town. It also is too small for six courts. It has cracked asphalt, no lights, no restrooms, street parking only. It might be very busy with traffic in the mornings with school drop-off. There's an elementary school right on the other side of that, and lots of pickleball players play in the morning. It's pretty much in the same area of town that the tennis center players are going to, so it wouldn't, would be pretty much going to the same location, just a different park. The neighborhood's kind of a low crime rate, and it also should not interfere with the neighborhood. Mineral Palace Park is pretty much close to the recommended size for six courts. It has cracked asphalt, has lights, but they don't work. The restrooms across the street are by the swimming pool. It has street parking, and then there's a small parking lot alongside the courts. It's a higher crime area, and there's a lot of homeless in the area. The noise from the interstate and the train tracks are also at its turns. This was the location identified by the GOCO grants. The project included replacing the courts with new post-tension concrete, fencing, lighting, shade structures and benches, and site prep. All of that estimated to be $530,000, I think, and that's probably a low figure now. I'm going to suggest a completely different site. Minnaqua Lake Open Space, it's on the south side of town. Use one of the two existing basketball courts. The size is perfect, and not only is the size right, but the surface is right. These are the surfaces at Lehigh, Fairmont, and Mineral Palace. And this is the surface at Minnaqua Lake Open Space. I've been told that Minnaqua Lake Open Space is not an option because pickleball is not in the master plan. I too had a master plan, but I had to change it as life changes. And so I'm hoping that a master plan for this area can also be changed. I think it's perfect. It has two basketball courts. They're seldom used. The size is right. They have lights, restrooms, lots of parking, and a covered pavilion between the two basketball courts. Has easy access from Pueblo Boulevard, 925. Hotels and shopping are nearby if we're talking about drawing out of towners here to play. The cost to get this up and functional is probably much cheaper than any other options being considered. It probably needs some surface work. It also needs paint for the right dimensions on the court, nets and fencing. Again, I'm no expert, but it seems like this would be really easy to convert to pickleball. It would be a good place, it would put the space to good use. Right now, we have a lot of field sports in the area, but this is generally how the courts look. We are asking consideration to convert one basketball court to pickleball and leave one for basketball. Everybody wins. It's certainly better than this. This is not an exaggeration. I've monitored this space a bunch, and I rarely see anyone playing basketball there. Pickleball players could make that section of the park come alive with activity, and I would bet that most days, there would be daily use, especially in the mornings when lots of players get out every weekend and many evenings. My recommendation to this group with the pickleball's player support is to have the city look into changing the master plan from Minnaqua Lake Open Space or see if there are options to alter the plan to convert one of those sets of basketball courts. This facility is our diamond. It's not even a diamond in the rough. It's perfect. It has all the amenities that are missing at the other locations, and it would see a lot of use from us. We would also recommend refurbishing Fairmont Park with outlighting to provide an option on the opposite side of town, which would encourage interest throughout the city rather than just one area. The end result would be two facilities in our community, one on the south side and one on the north side. Lake Minnaqua would be suitable for tournaments, large groups, and Fairmont would be for smaller neighborhood court that provides opportunities for residents on the outside of town or for players that are looking for involvement at a more recreational level. My thank-you slide. Anyway, we hope that there's a way that we can provide some great discussion followed by this decision and move forward. We've been waiting for something since the first GOCO grant in 2018. We've been waiting for something since the first GOCO grant in two thousand and eighteen. And communities throughout Colorado are finding a way to meet the need. And I just hope that we are the next community that does that for our players and our citizens. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. There's great information there. Questions, comments? Uh, one thing I wanted to ask maybe before we go to questions is, Stephen, you're here, Stephen Meyer. Do you have any input into this before we ask any questions?
Yo, let me, sure. Counselor Aliff indicated to you that this Parks Department has submitted to me a capital items project for the two thousand and twenty-two budget. And I've looked at that and today just approved three hundred thousand dollars in capital improvements in the Parks Department's budget for pickleball courts next year. You'll be seeing that in the, as part of the budget. This idea, and she's right about the locations where the Parks Department planned to put those pickleball courts is Minnaqua, I'm sorry, Mineral Palace, Fairmont, and Lehigh Park are there. So this Minnaqua Park or Minnaqua Lake is sort of a new element there that I'm certainly happy to take a look at. But we're going to propose and put in the budget three hundred thousand dollars for pickleball courts next year. So hopefully that'll be a start, moving in the right direction.
Right. I think we're good, Stephen. Unless you want to add something.
I would add one comment though.
Sure. Come on down.
Lake Minnaqua, uh, it's, we're scheduled to get it resurfaced. Solid conditions, of course, well, they're going to be sure resurfaced next week. So back to basketball. If that's a viable option, we probably won't, I'll probably need to cancel that.
Yes, let's talk about that tomorrow.
Uh, questions, comments, Councilor Flores?
You know, I, I can't help but think about Ray. When, when we're talking about pickleball, he had a passion for it. And, uh, you know, Ray was instrumental in bringing a lot of the funds that went to the Minnaqua area, Minnaqua Lake area. And I can't help but believe two things. One, that he wouldn't mind sharing one of the basketball courts for a pickleball court. And the other, the irony of that and the lack of use of basketball players. I think the pickleball court would put more focus in that area. And I bet we would get more basketball players in the other court. Just from a marketing standpoint and the density of people that will be playing pickleball. So I, I think, uh, I wanted to thank you for bringing this idea because what you did is you brought the cost way down as a result of utilizing a facility that's not being utilized totally right now. And I like your idea and I could support that. Thank you.
Counselor Schelling.
Look what you did. You know, you had a great idea. You put in an amazing amount of work. You were asked to come back, we made your head spin. And it all turned out great, all because of your personal effort.
Thank you.
So good job, thank you. We need more citizens like you.
Uh, Counselor McCully Baciccia.
Thank you for your presentation. You mentioned post-tension court is what we would need. So how much do you think it would cost to make Minnaqua Lake a post-tension court? Because if Mayor is saying that he, they have already budgeted three hundred thousand, I'm just wondering how much more you would need from possibly.
I believe those basketball courts are already post-tension courts.
Okay, so.
They, they would just really need painted.
Okay, well, that's good. So just Lehigh and the north side courts.
Yes.
That would be if you.
Right.
For your north side option, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, um, in the master plan, you've mentioned that Minnaqua Lake isn't able to be a pickleball court. So Mayor, you just said that's an option. Is that meaning that it doesn't say that in the master plan? Sorry, that's before me, so.
Yeah, well, that's before me too. I haven't seen the master plan. But I think, you know, if circumstances change or times change, uh, that we can change those master plans. I mean, this seems to be pretty consistent with, uh, you know, the use of that park. And I don't, I'll have conversations with the Parks Department. I mean, if in fact the basketball courts are underutilized, that might be a great place for a couple of, or three. How many, three pickleball courts could go in there?
I think six would go there.
Six would go in there at, uh.
And the one basketball court.
Basketball court.
Six would fit, okay.
Well, one basketball court, there's actually two courts in there, right? There's two.
That's correct, one pad.
One pad, okay, okay. But obviously there's some fences that have to go up around it that you don't have to have for basketball. But I mean, we'll explore that with, uh, with the Parks Department.
Okay, because absolutely, as District Four representative, you have my support, all of you pickleball lovers.
Thank you.
Counselor Tencio. You also have my support too. But I, I want, I want to tell you a, a story about what we're doing here in Pueblo. One day I was down here at City Hall and I was talking to somebody about recreational facilities here in Pueblo. And I drove from here to Minnaqua Lake, which is a nice recreation facility. It was, took me eight minutes. From there, I drove to City Park, which the golf course is there, softball facility, swimming pool. I took me about six minutes from there to there. From there, I drove to the Nature Center. From there, I drove to PMI. From there, I drove to the Twenty-Fourth Street Soccer Fields. From there, I drove to, uh, Mineral Palace Park, where they have the swimming pool. From there, I drove, uh, back down here to the City Hall. And I always ask people, what's wrong with that picture? Not one major recreational facility east of I-25. Not one. City Planning One-on-One tells you that you should arrange your facilities around town so that everyone would be able to use it. I noticed that you left out the east side for pickleball. I don't know whether you think that, uh, people on the east side wouldn't play it. But I was going to suggest that we, uh, the property that, uh, I, I didn't do any work on the softball complex through the COVID year because I knew we couldn't meet and I knew it was going to be really hard to get it done. I'm going to start working on that project again. The city owns the land. It's virgin land. There's no master plans that are already done. We could put one together. We could build a fantastic facility there. If you want to consider at lower Belmont rather than the east side, that's fine with me too because it's at Troy and Oakshire. And, uh, it has all the facilities and all the amenities that Minnaqua has and that Fairmont Park has. The only difference is that it's on the east side of town. But my, my, I was going to suggest it, but, uh, I don't think you would go for it because it's, it's on the east side, I guess.
Well, it's fair ground, there's no amenities there.
There's, well, there's, uh, there's the Burger King, there's the, uh, Sonic, there's.
But it's not a developed park.
No, it's not a developed park. But I mean, my point is that, uh, if we ever get around to doing the softball complex, we could put a pickleball complex in there, the best in the state, if we got around to it. I doubt that we will because we don't think that big in this town. But my point is that, uh, I was going to offer it, but, uh, since you've already made up your mind. Uh, never mind. But my point is that, uh, City Planning One-on-One, basic, my City Planning One-on-One that I took in my freshman year, it says that you should put facilities all over town, but we don't do that here. I was going to offer, but never mind.
Just as a comment, the facilities that I pointed out in my presentation were all ones that had been identified by Parks and Rec. The Minnaqua Lake is close to where I live and it's a place that I see that's underutilized. That's why it was part of the presentation. Pickleball players would certainly go to a beautiful facility on the east side of town. Troy and what was Oakshire? Yeah, that's, it's not unreasonable.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I appreciate everything that you brought to us. You know, that Minnaqua Lake Park is something that we really need to look at as far as, finishing out with a master plan. Uh, if pickleball courts fit in there, they fit in there. I mean, the thing is you want people to use it.
Right.
You don't build a park because you don't want people to go there. You build a park because you want people to use it. And if that will get it, I'm with Counselor Flores, if people will, will use it, man, we need to do it. We need to do it for sure. And then there's always opportunity in other areas of town to. I was talking to somebody today that we always talk about the agenda before, before the meeting. And, uh, you know, I thought it would be a great idea to do a, because truly, we don't know how, uh, a pickleball court's going to do in Pueblo. I mean, obviously you have two hundred members that will utilize it and play very well. But before we go and build six courts over here, six courts over there and invest all of this money and then only one court or two courts get used, then that would be a, that, that would be an issue. So I think it's a great idea to do something like Minnaqua Park where you have pretty much the infrastructure there. You can put them up, see how it's utilized. If we need, if we need more courts, then we can look in these other areas and build more courts. Uh, but I think it's, it's definitely a priority of City Council. I mean, that's one of our basic charges is to, to ensure the amenities of the community and, and to make sure that they're utilized and in good shape. So I appreciate all the hard work you did and that you've done and you're going to do. And, uh, sounds like you've got a lot of support up here.
Thank you for hearing us out.
Thanks for coming. Uh, Counselor Schelling, you have something else?
Yeah. Before Stephen leaves, I'm going to ask, it's going to be on resolution next week. How, I know, how many people have driven through City Park at night, come in from Goodnight and gone through the park? It's one-eyed park. We spent all that money to light the right side of the park and have all those gargoyles or whatever they, they're called. And the whole left side has the same thing and it's black, it's dark as night. So we've got kind of one-eyed park. Stephen's done the research on it, pull up the money. I'm going to ask next week that we put up six thousand bucks to light the left side of the front of City Park. And if you have any questions, get ahold of Stephen. But please drive by it tonight when it's dark. Because it looks great on the right side, but it's like a one-eyed city park. So it's going to come next week.
Where do you want six thousand to come from?
Out of contingency, council contingency. That's it, thank you. Got any questions, ask Stephen? But drive by it when it's dark, I mean, it just looks silly. Thank you.
And while this is on my mind, can I ask you one question too, Stephen? At Minnaqua Park, when, uh, we just built that, that beautiful restroom there or the restroom facilities, uh, over there at the, at the lake. And I was over there the other day, the only thing you can use is the outhouse.
Right, we still have an assembly. Contractors just finished and getting our CO finalized, so we have to reopen it.
Well, you need to get that open. Thank you. Okay, the Housing Authority Annual Report, Mr. Treheal, Mr. Quinn. It's great to see you guys, thank you for coming tonight.
He's going to be a tough guy to replace.
Evening, members of council. It's a pleasure to join you this evening. Um, I know, I can't remember the last time I've been in the room in person, so this is incredible. So it's great to be back. Thank you so much all for the time. Mayor Gradisar and his staff, thank you for your great support. My name is Stephen Trehan. I'm joined this evening by our Commission Chair, Jack Quinn, who I've always admired. But in joining housing, I've come to learn of his reputation across the country for the types of projects that our city did along with his leadership. So he also now serves as our Commission Chair. And I'm honored to be joined here this evening by Commissioner Quinn. I'm going to turn it over to him to kind of start us off. We'll give you a brief historical perspective of some of the many projects we've done and then dig into some of the current projects that we have. We'll highlight a document that our office confirmed was sent over to you and then certainly take any questions that you have. So Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, first, I would like to announce that as of last Thursday at our commission meeting, the board did hire Steve as the Executive Director of the agency. So we're happy about that.
Thank you.
It's the first time in two years that we have finally had a permanent Executive Director. So we have a lot of, a lot of faith in Steve. We think he's going to move the agency forward. Uh, as many of you know, I was the director of the agency for many years. And then I retired and I was off for several years. And then I was asked to come back on as a commissioner. And now, and this year I'm the chair. Steve asked that I give a little brief history of the agency. Many of you commissioners know me for years, others of you don't. Uh, the agency was actually started in nineteen fifty-one. It actually was formed in about nineteen thirty or thirty-one. But they never met for twenty years. And then Father Murray got the group back together, including people like Dr. John Farley and others, that reconstituted the board. And they did the first project, which was the Sangre de Cristo Apartments, which Steve was going to talk about because that's one of the things that we're doing right now is tearing that down and replacing it with new units, which, uh, previous director, Frank Paccheco tried to do several years under various programs and none of those would work for our city. And finally, there was a program available that actually fit our needs. And so we are in the process of replacing that. That, uh, was a very worn out project. It was the first one built by the agency in nineteen fifty-two. The agency has been one of the leaders in the country in innovation. Uh, I didn't get there until nineteen sixty-eight, but starting in nineteen sixty, they were the first housing authority in the country to build scattered site units. Uh, all across the country, there were typical what we know as projects, which the Sangre de Cristo was. And if you drive around the country, you can spot them. You know what a government project was. This was the first agency to build scattered site houses. And we continued that under my administration during the thirty-eight years that I was there. We have units all over town and all census tracts, Larry, everywhere. We have units all over town. I can, I can also tell you that we are innovators in, in so many other things, such as the, uh, the units out in, uh, what we call Oakshire Hills, which was the first one in the country to be developed under the tax credit program, where the units, the people could actually, if they agreed to stay there for fifteen years, pay the rent and keep the unit up, they could actually at the end of the fifteen years buy the unit. And it was like a lease purchase thing. First one and first agency of thirty-five hundred housing authorities in the country, first agency to do that. And we gave speeches all around the country to other agencies on how we made that work. And it's still a model around the country. Uh, things that, that we did, uh, in terms of a lot of renovation, many of you know Gary Treheal. Gary was staff architect for many years. He retired a couple of years ago. Um, the first project Gary did with us, he was still with HGF Architects at the time. It's right across the street, the beautiful Vale Hotel. Many people at the time thought there was a white elephant, letters written to the editor, we should have torn it down. Uh, beautiful building. We actually got the award from HUD as the finest elderly senior citizen public housing project in the United States, number one. And we're very proud of that building. Uh, someday we might like to take you through what's in that building. Uh, when we, when we took it over, we had our maintenance men go in and take all the wood that was inside it. Original cherry wood or maple. Took out all the doors, all the door, uh, window jams and sashes started in our maintenance facility, all the doorknobs and all that stuff. When they refinished the project, we put all that back in. So inside every apartment, all the, all the window sills and the interior doors are all original nineteen-ten doors. There were the original Vale Hotel and the doorknobs inscribed with a V. Mr. Vale was very, um, what was the word we would use? You know, he was very proud of his V. The stained glass windows have a V, everywhere you look in the building, there's a V. Uh, the exterior doors that go into the apartments are new because they had to be fire rated. But all the rest of the wood inside the building, we saved from the original nineteen-ten. Uh, it went through the twenty-one flood. The only building in downtown Pueblo that didn't move an inch. It has steel reinforced buttresses in the basement. Uh, that thing will never move. If an AIDS bomb hit it, it will never move. So many of the people in downtown Pueblo stayed on the roof of the veil during the flood. People from surrounding buildings, uh, has quite a history of the veil. We also did the Sacred Heart Orphanage, which was on the very edge of the town. At the time they built that orphanage, uh, we remodeled that several years ago. And, uh, we finished, there was a tax credit project, so we finished that term by the tax credits and, and sold it to a private developer. Uh, the oldest building we did was Central Grade School, built in eighteen eighty-two, uh, much older even than the veil. We remodeled that under tax credits. We also did the Rude Candy Building, which is over next to your fire station. And that, uh, that was a totally dilapidated building. Once again, the city manager told me about it and said, why don't you look at that thing? And so we did and we bought that. And said, why don't you look at that thing? And so we did and we bought that building for a song, put a lot of money into it again as a tax credit project. HUD, in the first years of my career, HUD had a lot of money. Later on my career, they had no money. Everything we did was tax credits and that's still true to this day. Uh other things we did were central management or maintenance facility. It used to be known as Deluxe Laundry down on Victoria. Many of you knew it as the Deluxe Laundry. Uh that was again a dump. I brought it from the late great Billy Anderson. Many of you might have known Billy. That thing was about to fall down when we bought it. John Herding and I took a ride around town one day looking for a facility and he pointed that one out. He says, why don't we buy that? And we did and we we remodeled that and that has been our management and maintenance facility. Um so we have quite a track record and thank God we had Gary on staff to do all the, we did a lot of historic renovation and Gary was an expert in that. Another thing that we did, uh the city came to us several years ago and said, you know, right across from the art center, they wanna tear that whole block down, two hundred blocks of Santa Fe. And make a parking lot out of it. And the city manager, Lou Quigley, said, you know, I don't want another gaping hole downtown. If you have parking lots, you gotta have something for people to come down to. And so he said, can you do something? So we re- redeveloped that entire two hundred block of Santa Fe. And built those units, which are beautiful and we've got a lot of compliments on those. So we have done a lot of things over the years in cooperation with the city. City's been a wonderful partner with the Housing Authority. And we did a lot of stuff that a lot of people know, don't know that we were in partners with. But we uh we've just have been a wonderful partner with the city and a lot of times the city will come to us and say, can you do something here? In fact, the funny one is right next door, the two apartment buildings, the Union Plaza and Richmond Apartments across the street from the veil. Quigley talked to me one day and says, we need to do something more downtown to get more people downtown. I said, right now, there's no HUD money at all. Except for what's called the two O two project and Housing Authorities aren't eligible for it. He said, well, who is? I said, well, it has to be a nonprofit. He said, like who? I says, well, somebody like SRDA. He says, they could sponsor it? I said, yeah. So he got on the phone, he called Milwaukee. He says, Steve, get your butt over here. So Steve walked in, he says, Steve, how'd you like to own a building? He said, oh, okay. He says, so the Housing Authority did all the work on it. SRDA is the owner of those two buildings. Gary, we did all the plans, all the construction stuff and we manage it. We did everything on it. SRDA owns it. If you can get a deal like that, that's pretty good, you know, but that's that's kind of the stuff that the Housing Authority does and we uh. We told Nick at a meeting a few weeks ago, we'd be happy to continue working with the city any way we can. I hope I didn't go on too long, Steve, but that's kind of a brief history of the Housing Authority since nineteen fifty one. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Commissioner Quinn. And as you can see, it's hard to drive around the community of Pueblo. And not cross an area that we have somehow touched in some way. And as you know, our mission, we remain dedicated to providing affordable housing to our community. We know. That we have got a lot of work to do and we are currently underway with one of the biggest projects right now is the complete redevelopment. Of the Sangre de Cristo Apartments, as Mr. Uh excuse me, Commissioner Quinn had indicated, those have been in existence now since nineteen fifty two or the early fifties and so. Our job right now is completely re- demolishing those and rebuilding what we now call townhomes. And in lieu of presenting you with pictures and slides, we'd like to extend an invitation to each and every one of you to come on out and visit the site. We had the pleasure of providing a tour to President uh Atencio as well as Mayor Gradisar. To show them the completion of phase two. This is a four phase project that we are um undertaking with the first being Uplands Townhomes. The second, which was just completed a little over two weeks ago, was the Mountain View Townhomes. The third and fourth are going to be the Crawford Townhomes and the Sitter Townhomes. That will completely redevelop and bring onboard two hundred and twenty units to our community and redevelop that entire neighborhood there. Um so we would invite all of you to, if you'd like, please let us know if you're interested. We will help to set up a time. To provide you with a tour and show you exactly what we're talking about when we're doing this. This is under one of the HUD programs called RAD, the Rental Assistance Demonstration. This is how we're able to do that for our community. We also are in the midst of taking a look at some of our other properties and how we utilize different HUD programs that are available. To leverage more partnerships and resources to help us build and further that. You've also been provided with a copy of our recent annual report. This kind of gives you a high, high level overview of the work of the agency, uh but that is one of the main staples that we are working on right now and realize that in doing so. It takes it takes many organizations to accomplish this. So since coming on board, I've been made of a made aware of more of the partnerships and more of the. Community collaborations that are underway to help address the housing needs of the community. Whether it be homeless or whether it be just affordable housing, low income, we are taking a look at what do we do and what can we provide in this particular space to help further that even more. We are in communication with some of our other partners that'll take a look at, as Commissioner Quinn indicated, we've always hung our hat on being innovative and creative and thinking outside the box. And we are once again tapping into that innovation and creativity along with our partners. To take a look at how we not only address the housing need as it stands today for the community, but forever put in place structures and programs that can take care of those that need. Assistance. You cannot ask someone to worry about a job or to worry about education if the most basic fundamental is a roof over their head is not yet met. And so we are really striving and moving fast. Our agency is over seventy employees strong. It's absolutely incredible when you walk through and see the passion and dedication. Many of which have got a a wealth of experience and years of of service to the agency, which is great. So we have a great deal of institutional knowledge. We also administer one thousand five hundred and forty vouchers throughout the community. And as I'm sure you're well aware, there's difficulty in finding space or finding inventory where these vouchers can be utilized. However, we've had a great deal of success. In working with landlords and and making sure that they're aware of our work throughout the agency as well. And thank you. I see up on the screen here, you have the document that I'm referring to, which is the annual plan. Um as I mentioned, we currently, as of print of this publication here, had thirteen O two housing choice vouchers utilized of those fifteen forty. So we've got more work to do, but certainly we we need the inventory to be able to do that and we're working towards that and this number has since increased. We also take a look at these numbers monthly with our commissioners as well in terms of how many units we have. One of the other units that we're extremely proud of is the Mineral Palace Tower that's located right there next to Mineral Palace. And and obviously that one has been a part of our agency since its inception, I believe. And still today serves a great deal of over a hundred and thirty residents within that particular unit as well. So as you can see, a part of our move um in in the work that we do within housing, a part of the programs that we're leveraging through HUD. Are going to allow us to be a little bit more nimble, a little bit more responsive to the needs of our our residents. And be able to expand upon some of the partnerships and programs that are within our own community that we can take advantage of. And I want to point out, one of the things that has been kind of the aha is really the biggest learning piece thus far. Is that in order to do these projects, the amount of collaboration that it takes and the number of partners that are involved. Whether it be the city, the county, investors, HUD, CHAF, the Housing Authority. There are many, many organizations and individuals that we call to the table when one of these projects are put together. And so as we look to the future. You have our commitment as a partner with the city of Pueblo that we stand shoulder to shoulder to help address the issues. As it relates to housing in the community and we are gonna do so the way that we always have and that's with innovation, collaboration and commitment. To ensuring that we do our part to meet that housing need. So I again uh will reference the document that's up on the screen that I believe has been made available. But would again close with the invitation to please let us know if you're interested. We'd love to show you not only the property. That we're referring to at the Sangre de Cristos, but our team is also working on a fall or excuse me, a spring tour. Uh that we are gonna be putting together to help take residents and our our Board of Commissioners and others around throughout the community. To show all of the other projects that we've done throughout the years where we've had our thumbprint in some way, shape or form. So again, I thank you for your time here this evening. We appreciate the support of the city, the participation. Certainly, I want to acknowledge Mayor Gradisar's staff. Uh who we work with on a pretty regular basis. Appreciate their their support and their innovation as well on all that we do and thank you for the time here tonight.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming. Any questions, comments, uh councillor Schelling?
Before comments, could I add, uh Steve mentioned that the Crawford and Sitter. Uh projects, in case you don't know, Mr. Crawford and Mr. Sitter were the first two Medal of Honor winners in the city of Pueblo. That's where those names come from. Okay.
Stephen, I was just gonna say, you're very bright and you speak very well, but I hope you understand you are sitting next to the master.
Oh, I know.
And I hope you listen a lot to what he has to say.
I have been a sponge.
Good, and he's got a foolish bone in his body. So if you get him to go to Mexico, he's really a lot of fun.
I would also be remiss if I also didn't acknowledge uh my immediate predecessor, Frank Pacheco, who. Uh you know, stepped back into the Housing Authority in the role to help, you know, obviously we we know the year that we've all been through with twenty twenty and COVID. Uh but I do want to just publicly acknowledge the contribution of Mr. Pacheco as well, who had the pleasure of working with Commissioner Quinn for a number of years. And and his service and dedication to the same mission that we now stand to uphold and carry forward.
Thank you. I called uh called Mr. Pacheco a few months ago because one of my family members was having trouble in one of the apartments. And man. I mean, that guy took care of everything. He was, he was very good, very good. Uh councillor Atencio?
Yeah, hey, Jack. Thanks a lot for the uh trip through our city's history, you know, that timeline. Uh I just seem to forget, you you forget, cause I I was here through all of it. And I remember each one of those projects going up and uh talking about it to my friends and everything. I was with the city back in the early seventies through the seventies. When some of these things were happening and uh since then I've forgotten all these things. So thanks for the for the reminder. That was great. But I'm really looking forward to Stephen, what you're gonna be doing in the future. The mayor and I did take a tour through uh uh that complex and. Uh I suggest that each one of you guys take a tour with that place. It's really a. You'll be amazed uh the technological advances that they're that are putting, being put into each one of those units. Uh I mean, the units that are there now, the old ones. I'm surprised they're even livable anymore compared to the ones that are being built and uh. Just the dignity of a person living in one of those is gonna rise exponentially, I believe, because they're gonna, they're gonna have a. A fine place to live and they're gonna be proud of what where they do live. And I'm looking forward to seeing the agency under your leadership and where it's gonna go from here on.
Thank you, President Atencio. And I'll just add, if I may, um that is something, we're very intentional, even with the naming of those particular sites now, as you know, it's oftentimes referred to as the projects, they're the bricks. We're very intentional now on how we uh brand those to be townhomes and the way that they're designed and all the technology that goes into those. So thank you for recognizing that and certainly the effort to continue doing so with the remaining phases.
Councillor McCully Bacichia.
Commissioner Quinn, thank you for uh the history. Definitely you are a trailblazer in the Housing Authority and and we're grateful for you. You are an asset to Pueblo. Um phase three and four, I was just curious, I don't know, maybe I missed it, but when are those expected to be done? And then um yes, I do like how you are being mindful in the names. I think that's really important.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. So phase three is actually on the runway as we speak. Uh we have just completed, we were awarded the nine percent tax credits to the state. We've put together our sources and uses, which means our investors and others have come to the table. And we are now putting forward a preliminary schedule to begin the, actually, as a matter of fact, asbestos testing is what's taking place. Uh the demolition of the current units is scheduled for early spring. And we are expected to start construction in May or June of twenty twenty two for the fourteen month completion after that. Immediately upon completion of Crawford, we will begin the process of Sitter, much like we're doing right now with closing out Mountain View. Which we were just moving residents into three weeks ago and already beginning Crawford. So we're looking to that timeline. By the time that we are in, to my knowledge, this is another trailblazing opportunity because there's not very many housing authorities, if any, that we're aware of at this point. That are doing the RAD project like we are with a complete demolition of property and rebuilding and moving tenants around. Most are going in and just rehabbing and kind of bringing up to code. We're starting from scratch and building from the ground up. So we're looking at probably about another, I'd say, three to four years completion all the way through that entire project for phase four.
Okay, so twenty twenty six, we should expect all those beautiful townhomes up.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, they look beautiful. I love the fences too. Those are really nice fences.
Councillor Brown.
Well, Stephen, thank you for your presentation and uh. I really want to thank Jack Quinn for all his years of service. It's uh. And it was just a quick uh reminder of all the things he's been involved in over the last forty years, right? So thanks again.
Thank you, Ed.
Yeah, Mr. Quinn, you know, I'm not near as old as these guys and. I would love to just have dinner with you sometime. Yeah, it's just premature, premature.
You know, if I if I make a comment on Larry's comment about the years, because you know, one man's castle, whatever, Mr. Realtor, you would know that saying. But Anthony Núñez told me once, he moved from Salt Creek. Through the projects when he was a kid. And he moved out of dirt floors and the projects at that time, no floor tile, just concrete. He thought he was in heaven. And those units were sterile, concrete floors, no cabinets, just shelves. I mean, they were, when they built those in fifty two. It was just as stark as you could get, but Anthony thought he went to heaven, cause in Salt Creek, he came out of place with dirt floors. So it's all depends where'd you come from? And you know, and what we're doing today is so much better.
Well, thank you guys for what you're doing. Congratulations, Stephen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councillor Flores.
Yeah, I I wanted to wait uh before, but publicly I wanted to congratulate Stephen for. Uh what I believe was the original intent of the Latino Chamber and that was to develop young people like you. But it's certainly a loss to the Latino Chamber, but you're not not too far away.
Not at all.
But congratulations, it's a job that you deserve. Uh you've. Uh are really quite kind of a um shown that you're a leader in the community. You've done amazing things for the Latino Chamber. And I wish you well and I wanted to, I I've never had a chance to uh to laud um. Jack Quinn, who I worked with, I had the privilege of 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 working with you for so many years as your risk manager. But I don't think people in Pueblo understand that uh and I got to attend a lot of the conferences, the the NARO conferences. Uh he was like the chancellor of the NARO uh Association, which was all of the housing, housing authorities throughout the United States. And uh we, you know, I just wanted to let people know that Pueblo really benefited from your expertise, innovation. And you really created a lot of new things throughout the United States and I I could see that when I attended the conferences. But again, um I don't, you know, I wanted to congratulate you in your retirement, but they drug you back. I I I remember uh some of the really interesting stuff, especially the uh the Vale Hotel. And how much it took to recreate and and the stained glass windows. I remember that was an amazing job and then the Woodcroft Fire over, that was uh, that was something else too, uh behind the Sharmar Nursing Homes, but. It's good to see you again and congratulations on your retirement, but thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you again.
Appreciate you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Mark, sometime you wanna have dinner, let me know.
I'm calling you. I'm calling you, I promise.
Thank you, council.
Uh number four on the agenda, Neighborhood Safety Night. Ms. Chapman and Captain Ryder, Officer Chapman.
Hey, it's great to see you guys.
Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. Yes, I'm ready. So as you all know, we had a Neighborhood Safety Night um. In July, no, in August, sorry, my months are messed up. Uh in August, we had Neighborhood Safety Night. Um thankfully, we waited till the last minute for COVID restrictions to lift so we could still have this event. So. We planned it in about eight weeks and was still able to have a successful event, so. Um. This is the, okay. My doc, oh, he still has some behavioral issues, so he had to go to babysitting. Uh no, he's still in training. We're still working with him, so we left it home, but we'll be bringing him in the future for everybody to to enjoy, so. Yes, yeah, we're excited to have him at the department, so. Um so the history of the event uh started in twenty nine or twenty fifteen as National Night Out. And uh National Night Out, if you're not familiar, has a set date, some set guidelines. You have to have a membership for that. And so we started it with that and uh in two thousand sixteen, it was decided to change it to Neighborhood Safety Night. And that's what it is to the present time. The event was changed from National Night Out because. Like we said, there was some restrictions, some guidelines, and we wanted to be able to tailor this event to our community, to our department. To be able to have our own ideas and not be restricted to just what um you know, the. National Night Out does across the country. So we went out on a branch and went out on our own and uh created our own event and still stands today. So the purpose of this event uh is a service to the community. Uh we use this event to build relationships, positive relationships with the. Police, uh provide education to citizens and their families on how to be safe. Uh from not just physically safe, but. uh, from, not just physically safe, but identity theft, um, fraud, all those things. We try to give as much information about a big, broad spectrum as we can at this event. So we like to use this event to interact on a personal level with kids, with families. Uh, we involve as many community members as we can, as far as our neighborhood watch, to come out and um, help us with this. Uh, we spotlight several local organizations that offer resources to the community. So this year, we had about thirty vendors that showed up and it's just nice to spotlight those, so the community knows what kind of resources that we have. This was a flyer that was used this year. Um, it was August seventh from four to eight P M. And it was the AT&T parking lot. Uh, before this year, this event was held on the Riverwalk and mostly on the Victoria side and down through the Riverwalk there. And it was changed this year for two reasons. One, again, we're on that timeline of COVID restrictions lifted at the end of May. We wanted to do this and um, going through blocking streets and getting those things figured out. We were on that timeline. So we changed it to the AT&T parking lot. They're gracious enough to let us use their facility. And also, it gave us an opportunity to have more of a controlled environment, um, in and out with that kind of a setup. So we had food trucks, we had four main course food trucks that were local from here. We had two ice cream and snow cone trucks. And we also had a coffee truck there. Uh, we had first responder vehicles for the kids and the families to enjoy. So our traffic unit, SWAT unit, bomb, drone, the Pueblo Fire had their fire trucks there and their staff. Pueblo County Sheriff brought out their uh, fire truck and one of their patrol cars. State Patrol came out with their car and some troopers and they did a really cool DUI goggles thing with the kids and they had to go through some uh, different things on the ground with the DUI goggles and things like that. So that was uh, new, that was fun for them. Flight for Life typically comes and the plan was for them to land on top of the parking garage. Unfortunately, they had a last-minute emergency. They were unable to make it, but they did send us their Flight for Life ambulance. And that was, that was really cool too. Uh, and AMR brought their ambulance as well. Uh, we had about thirty different vendors from the community. Um, everything from, it's CSU Pueblo, we had some local gyms there to promote health. We had uh, car seat safety checks. Um, our own uh, dispatch center was out there talking to kids and, and families about dispatch and dialing nine-one-one and knowing information when you dial nine-one-one, things like that. So we had about thirty different uh, vendors out there to talk to everybody. So it was a very good turnout. We also had, um, every year we do raffle prizes and giveaways. This year, we were very fortunate from uh, the community to get some great donations. We gave out ring doorbells, scooters, um, that light up at night for the kids that are lighting them in the dark. Sporting equipment, locking mailboxes, smoke detectors, things like that. So we kind of give an array. Obviously, the kids would love the bikes and things like that, but we also wanna give things that promote the safety. So those ring doorbells for security, the uh, smoke detectors, locking mailboxes for um, the safety side of it too. So uh, we threw in a scavenger hunt this year for the bicycles instead of just putting them in a raffle. Wanted to get good interaction between the community and those vendors, and this was a way to do that. So created a scavenger hunt. They were handed that when they walked in the door and had about eight items that they had to go find at different booths. I gave booths different things, you know, a light bulb or whatever. And uh, they had to go and that makes them kind of inner, get that interaction and have conversations. And also gives the vendors the opportunity to talk about what service they have to offer. Uh, we handed out a hundred and forty of those scavenger hunts and got ninety-three back. And um, one thing we did add with those bikes this year is we have a volunteer at the police department strictly for our bike patrol. And he takes care of making sure that those bikes are maintained, that the safety equipment's still good, it's still safe, it's fitting the officers right. And that volunteer went out to do the same for the kids that won the bicycles. He fitted their bicycles for them. He made sure that they were not too small, not too big. So it was also a great feeling to know that they had these bikes and they were going home um, already fitted properly for those kids. So that was a good um, addition. And we also did a backpack giveaway, so we had name slips and we gave out a um, a hundred and fourteen of those. There was no limit, just a hundred and fourteen kids took, excuse me, took um, advantage of that. And we gave away fifteen backpacks full of school supplies to kids here in the community. And the attendance, uh, again, being able to have that entry point, the entry and the exit point, um, gives us the opportunity to keep attendance, which we've never been able to do before. In the Riverwalk, it's so, such an open area. There's no way to keep track of really how well-attended these are, what the numbers are. So um, as you can see, we kept track by hour and ended up with about six hundred people. There was one other point there. Of course, they could come in um, through one other point, but um, we had between six hundred and seven hundred people show up to this event and it was in four hours. Our event sponsors, uh, Black Hills Energy, The Tile House, Target Health Solutions, we were very thankful for them. We had a bunch of incline donations, Pueblo Toyota, they paid for um, boat rides, free boat ride coupons to get people to go to the Riverwalk after the event or even in the future. AT&T again, gave us the venue at no cost. We were very thankful to them. And Air Ford was, Air Affordable Disposal gave uh, trash cans to keep the trash down. And Pueblo West Ten always is gracious and gives us um, tables and chairs and usually tents um, for this event. So that was very nice. And then giveaway sponsors were uh, spread out, Lowe's, Walmart, Target, they were all very, very good. Um, I did, some additional partnerships were, was uh, Night Magic Entertainment. They did the DJ services and he was fantastic. He did all the announcing for all of the prizes. We had, I don't know, we counted how many prizes and there were so many. So that poor guy, I don't know if he had a voice at the end of the night, because he just was talking all night long. And Mr. Magic, he comes out and he's faithful every year, comes out and does the balloon animals for the kids and the hats. They just love him and he does some magic stuff with them and he's always a hit and he's very, very good. Mobile Record Shredders is another uh, partner every year. And they actually bring a truck out and park it there, so people can come whether they're coming to the event or not coming to the event. You can bring your paperwork to be shredded and just hand it to him and he puts it in the truck and shreds it for you right there. And Parks and Recreation. This was a new partnership as far as movies in the park. They have their movies in the park throughout the summer, but this was the first time they had it. Uh, we backed it up to Neighborhood Safety Night. So there, my event ended at eight o'clock, their event started at eight o'clock. And being that it was at AT&T parking lot, they just had to kind of walk down the hill and they were in the area of the movie. I did reach out to the coordinator for movies in the park and asked him how he felt about that kind of a partnership. Did he think it was worth it? Um, and his opinion, and he's uh, said that that was the highest-attended movie that they had all summer long. So that partnership actually ended up working out very well and um, we intend to do it in the future. So our sponsorships overall, again, we're very thankful. The community always comes behind us and we had hard times during the pandemic and they still just pulled through for us to give us these donations and make sure this event was successful and uh, one of the most successful ones from the very beginning. So um, we just, we're just so thankful that they keep coming through to support us. Uh, the outreach we did, we dispersed flyers throughout the community in person, delivered them, made sure they're, you know, hanging up in windows and um, outfits for the community to see. We also partnered with the Greater Chamber and Latino Chamber and they blasted it out to all of their members. Social media, we have Facebook and Twitter and we put it out on Facebook, uh, one in June, just to kind of announce the event for people to know that this event is coming. And then we did one post a week for five weeks leading up to the event. Those posts highlighted something different each week. One week it was about, um, you know, what, these are the giveaways we're doing. One week it was about sponsorships. One week it was um, highlighting the car seat checks and the shredder, things like that. So just so people knew exactly what the event was gonna hold, so they could know what the, what there was to look forward to. And then we also did local TV news interviews, a Chieftain interview and a radio interview to make sure we covered all of our bases and there was as many people reached as absolutely possible to get this event out there. Oops. Um, and manpower, this is, I can't stress enough how much this is a team effort throughout multiple departments and city and everything. So we have sworn officers, our civilian employees, our volunteers, uh, the Police Academy recruits. I think this was the first year we involved the Police Academy recruits and they were a lifesaver and they just loved it. They were towards the end of their academy. And so this was an event that they actually got to be out in the community and interacting heavily with people. And they were there the entire time and it was just so nice to see them and people talking to them and knowing that they were about to be on the street in their community, in their neighborhoods. Um, our SOAs came out with the police explorers and that was also good. They ran our games and um, our dunk tank. We have a dunk tank that um, Captain Ryder was close enough to volunteer. It's time to be dunked. Uh, Chief Barb Huber was also in there and some of her guys. So that's always fun. Um, and a bunch of neighborhood watching. And our neighborhood watch comes out and helps with this. We try to push neighborhood watch at this event to increase those neighborhood watches in our community, because they are a huge partnership with the police department and we're thankful for them. And then of course, other city departments that we did partner with. And then just some pictures, thankful to our drone team. Now, we can do these kinds of pictures. And this is during setup, so at the bottom of the screen would be Main Street and you're looking east towards the AT&T building. Um, on the right-hand side of the screen, actually, I think the next picture shows a little better. So we flipped directions. Now you're looking at Main Street, but on the left-hand side of your screen is all of the food trucks. And on the right-hand side of the screen is the uh, first responder vehicles. So the way we intended it and it worked out well was you would enter on Main Street and you'd have to walk down that aisle there. You get to see all the food trucks. You get to see all of those vendors. Once you get down to the end, um, you would make the U-turn. The dunk tank was down there to attract those people to get down to the end. They used the dunk tank, dunk to the person that was in there and then they would walk back up the other side to see those vendors and that would lead them into the first responder vehicles. So everybody was able to get the same amount of foot traffic. No vendor was left out, because he was down off the side or anything. Uh, we were able to get everybody about the same amount of foot track and the foot traffic and the same amount of attention to get that information out to the community. Just some pictures, which is really, this is what we're really going for here. Um, in the back of the ambulance, in the back of the SWAT truck, um, that one-on-one interaction for those kids and those families to know that, you know, we're here from them, we're gonna be there to help you. And we're just, we're not scary. We're another person out there and we're glad to be able to have these kinds of events again. Uh, these were our car seat checks. Uh, Captain Brian Lyons from State Patrol and um, Christian from Crysis. And uh, just an overall picture there, the crowd. Uh, our explorers there running the games and the police recruits taking a break, eating snow cones apparently. And uh, this is actually a video. Can we play the videos? Right now? It's just a good example of what the Once he found out where the button was, he was all in. So those are the kinds of things that we uh, can do now and enjoy doing at, at these events like this. So some future plans, uh, we want to keep AT&T as the venue. It just provides better access control. Vendors get that equal foot traffic. Uh, worked well in the partnership with the movie and it's centrally located. Uh, we want to, of course, enhance what we have, so increasing attendance even more. Uh, more people we reach, the more people we can educate, which the more education, the safer the community becomes with these kinds of resources. And then other partnership ideas, surveillance donation, if we could get, you know, a business, maybe one business and one residence a year to get a full surveillance system on their house or their business. Um, creates a safer community, makes them feel safer, safer in their, in their environment, um, more eyes on the street. Also, I had reached out this year to try to get some um, sports people here, some, you know, mascots, some of the Denver Broncos or um, the Avalanche, things like that. They just weren't doing any of that, of course, with COVID. Uh, maybe CSU Pueblo next year to get their mascot and their um, athletes out to have the kids see that you have those kinds of people here in your own community. So um, that's kind of the workup of what we did this year and where we, what we've been doing with this. So, thank you.
Captain Ryder, you have anything to add?
You know, I just wanted to say that I've been involved with this.
Hit your mic.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I just wanted to say that I've been involved with this incident or this event since twenty fifteen. And I can honestly say that it's improved every single year, but I've also been very fortunate to have really good crime prevention officers who have organized it. So um, I started off, um, our first years at Richmond before they expanded the Commitment Center. And then we eventually moved it, like Megan said, to Victoria. And that was a great event also. But then, uh, from my perspective, the AT&T parking lot is by far and away has been the best venue for us, because it's it's safe. There's not a lot of, you don't have to worry about maybe a car coming through or anything like that. It's all consolidated. And you can just kind of lay it out the way you want to. So this has been very, a very good event. Um, like I said, I'm very fortunate. Megan did a great job for us. So I'm very appreciative of her, for that. And also, um, we can't do this without our, without our fellow uh, first responder agencies. The Fire Department has been with us for every year since we've been doing this, as long with our State Patrol and those other agencies. So and if they don't show up, then it's not nearly the event that it is. And so we appreciate their participation as well.
Thank you. We sure appreciate you guys. Any comments, questions? Counselor Shilling.
For a while there, Captain Ryder, I thought you were just gonna be a pretty face here. And Officer Chapman, I'm glad you began to breathe, because when you first started out, I could tell you weren't. You did a great job and the amount of work you guys did. It's really given back to the community. And I've been involved with a few functions and that's a lot of work that you did and put in the time and effort. So thank everybody, please, from all of us that, that were involved. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores.
Yeah, I wanted to congratulate you for this year. I think you guys did an amazing job. But what it does to put a face on, you know, all the first responders, your department, you know, the people that uh, they, the kids especially, they get a whole different view of uh, that you're there really to serve them. And I think that's the message that you sent. It's like, congratulate you. As I looked at your PowerPoint presentation, I couldn't help but think, if you were that organized, uh, that was part of the success. Uh, it just sounds like you had every detail down to the minute thing. And so I congratulate you for having a great event and I just hope it keeps growing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think that maybe next year, and, and as you move forward, I think if you get us involved in, in the early stages, maybe we can help with some of the contacts that we have on uh, you know, raising money and getting, getting some support for like some more bicycles or
You could put all the council in the dump, in the dumping.
Yes, that, that was my plan for next year.
Yeah.
It really was. We ran out of time, but I was just gonna say, you know, I have enough space for all of you and that's all I need.
There's quite a few people out there that would pay.
Yeah.
I thank you guys for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's nothing else left. There's Okay, then we'll, ho, ho, ho.
Yeah, well, hold on.
And uh, Counselor Warner.
So I just wanted to bring this up. Um, the um, development that's going off of Twenty-Fourth and Pueblo Boulevard, um, that's looking for the two million dollars in sewer, the whole sewer replacement.
What, Neighborhood Works?
No, not Neighborhood Works. It's a
That's Jack Bay's Development. That's
That's at Twenty-Fourth.
No, it's not. It's at Twenty-Fourth.
Yeah, but he's asking for four and a half million.
No, he's asking for two million, right?
What's your question, Lloyd?
Well, we have something on um, the agenda Monday, and I just wanted to clarify what that was. Well, we were told that was gonna be on next Monday.
The next Monday is the Wild Horse Project.
That's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about. So we, we have
Highway fifty.
Right, that's not the Twenty-Fourth.
No.
So that's like, that's north of Highway fifty, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we really don't have a lot of information on this. We haven't heard from the builder. They're building six hundred homes or how many homes? See what I'm saying?
Wild Horse is just a, more of a retail development and no homes.
Okay. Okay, I, I would just like to hear from the, the developer, like everybody, I mean, we hear from all of them, but this one.
So Lloyd, could you So Laura, could you get on the, I.
This wastewater um um project is um our internal city wastewater project to increase um the size of the wastewater pipe for all the development that is coming in um along the west or west side there of highway, of the Pueblo Boulevard. So it isn't being put in for one specific developer or development. Um so that's why when Nancy presented the um the Arthur request for the two million, there was not an associated developer with her. So there, there is a developer that is interested in um an annexing that is north of Highway fifty off of Wild Horse that has not been yet. I don't know if it's even been to planning and zoning yet um for that annexation, but that's the one you probably are talking, that you'd like to see a presentation from.
I, I would like some other council members to chime in here because I, I'm just confused.
Yeah, that, that pipeline is going to go north of Highway fifty specifically for that.
It's going to go north and south, so we can't do any more developments though along the Pueblo Boulevard without it, including the jail. You heard her say it's going to just um come in and join uh the current wastewater um piping there. So I mean, maybe, Dan, can you, can you help any further in the?
Yes, I can. Um when the YMCA annexed into the city and and built their campus, um our development regs at that time would have required them to enlarge the sewer main um for them to be compensated later or reimbursed later by other developers. For cost reasons, the YMCA was not required to enlarge that line. They simply connected to the city's wastewater line. Um we have some developments around this, this enlarged sewer line. One is the Southern Colorado Clinic. One is the YMCA so they can expand their campus. And we have two annexations. Uh one is, one is the Wild Horse Annexation and that is north of, of Highway fifty. And then another one called the WL Annexation that is not further along. So what's before you uh next Monday is an enlargement of the sewer line along the property that belongs to the YMCA since they did not do that expansion. The reason that it's so expensive is that the terrain is not favorable. Um there's, there are a couple of Arroyos that we're going to have to cross. Uh this is going to be deep, um somewhere between six and ten feet. And that's why it's, it's, it's the two million dollar price tag. So we're not helping any particular developer. We're ha, we're helping the YMCA so they can expand their campus. We're hel, helping um the clinic, Southern Colorado Clinic, which is on Pueblo Boulevard. And then, as you said, uh uh Mr. Ayla, we, we, we've got the Wild Horse Annexation which is going to be retail north of Highway fifty.
Questions? I think it would be helpful, I think it would be helpful before Monday that if you would email to the counselors the map that I've seen of where the line goes and, you know, the.
Yep.
The sewer line. So everybody's aware of where it's going, where it is now and where it's going and how it's going to connect.
It's going to be six thousand feet, so just over a mile. And Nancy.
See, because you have me confused.
Okay.
My understanding is they came from the houses along Highway fifty and it connects up Highway fifty, but you're saying it's over by the Y.
It's probably by the Y.
So can we get the map?
It's, yeah. It's the famous purple line on the map.
It's going to be on the Y's eastern boundary.
Western boundary.
Western.
Yeah.
Western.
It's down through the street? The western boundary would be down through the street or where those apartments are. Eastern boundary makes more sense.
The map.
Yeah.
I, I thought it was the eastern boundary because it was down by the.
That's where all the.
Railroad tracks and the Arroyos, yeah.
No, no, it's west of their property. So when, when WL annex, annexes, they're going to have to take it north of the Y property, the same with Wild Horse. When they annex, they're going to have to extend the line. This also helps the Pueblo County Jail because they're going to need an enlarged line. And when they come in, they're also going to have to pay for the enlargement of this sewer line.
Then the development north of Highway fifty is going to have to pay to get in there.
Yes.
And the WL, which is that one?
They're, they're adjacent to each other.
They're adjacent to each other.
And they.
They're going to have.
Yeah, so they said, look, we don't want to pick up the Y's bill, what the Y should have paid back in two thousand and nine. We don't want to pay for that. We'll pay north of that.
Yeah, that's.
When the sewer line's going to serve us, that's fine. So they'll do that. And then south of that is where the county's going to have to pay to connect.
Okay, well, the information I got was that or uh what I thought was going to happen was that we were putting in this sewer line all the way to Highway fifty.
No.
And the developers north of Highway fifty wouldn't get a two million dollar sewage line put in at our expense. And I, I couldn't see that at all. If they buy into this and they pay their fair share, then I don't have a problem. Otherwise.
It's, it's, it's six thousand feet. It doesn't go all the way to Highway fifty.
Yeah, I can see that. So they'll be, when they develop north of Highway fifty, they'll be able to hook onto this line, but at their expense.
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that map, there you go. Gee, great map. That's the famous purple line map.
Yeah, see, that's the eastern.
It should be a brown line.
Counselor Flores?
I, I just wanted to make one comment and that is that this is what cities do. This is part of our infrastructure. Without a line like that, you basically uh have us in a uh boxed in a corner without people having no motivation to develop any of that area if they would have to uh uh take care of that section. But they are going to incur the cost of connecting to it. Uh and uh, you know, that's what we want. But that line is also going to be paid by ARPA money, isn't it?
A hundred percent.
Yeah. And that's what it was intended to do.
The pink above, the pink that is, I say north, but it would actually be oh, well, anyway, the pink is the uh Wild Horse Annexation and the WL is the um what color is that? Uh teal. Perfect. Yeah, I couldn't think of it. Yeah.
Right.
Turquoise.
They're, they're going to, they will also incur the cost of going underneath Highway fifty too, right?
That is going to be their problem.
Right.
And their engine, I think the plans are already engineered for Wild Horse to go underneath Highway fifty. And then uh WL would uh share that cost as well.
Would you like, would you guys like any other information sent to you?
Just, you know what, you know what I would like? Um at some work session during a council night, so it's definitely televised. There's so many develop, so much development going on right now with just the growth. It would be nice to give that information all to the public in one in one um presentation. Because we, we also have uh an apartment building that was supposed to be going up and I haven't heard anything about that lately either. So I mean, I do get a few calls regarding this and and you can see we were confused on this one. So it would be nice.
Apartment building is, is, has applied for annexation.
Okay.
So.
Could it, could it be, I mean, is that, do you think that would be valuable for the public and I think it would be for the public anyway, just to show everything that's going on.
Well, maybe we get Scott Hobson to come in and give us a.
Okay.
And give us a presentation of what's in the works.
Yeah, Scott, he has an incredible um um uh I think information sheet. It's on a table right now of all the different developments in the city. And it is a moving target because he told me it was growing. I actually asked for permission to put it right there on the wall um as you move forward for eighteen months or twenty-four months. And they, he said, well, maybe we can put it in the chamber. So it would be something you could reference on a, on a regular basis as he needs to update it. It is, um yeah, we can make it and expand it as, as large as you like, but it's really an incredible picture at the moment.
Yeah.
So we'll get him on, we'll get him on.
It'd be nice for, for us and mainly the public as well.
Yep.
Is there any other questions? Anything? Everybody okay? Laura, John?